And the Lord, we're grateful for this day that you blessed us, Lord. We're grateful for all the blessings and prosperity that you give us as a community. So we just ask that you bid us with your spirit, the things that decisions that we make, the Lord will be
Dr. Chapman, sitting next to Mr. Robinson, welcome y'all forward. This is gonna be a heck of a first meeting for y'all.
I see any corrections? Hearing now, I'd ask for a motion to approve these edits.
We got a motion to be approved?
We got a motion to be approved. I gotta say, any discussion?
Good afternoon.
If not, all approved, the minutes and appointments are out. They are approved. All right, we need a motion to go to the public hearing with the county comprehensive plan. Let's move in here.
I'm so moved.
That was it.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, I wouldn't go to the public hearing, but the comprehensive plan is out. Will be approved. All right, comprehensive plan for draft for 2020.
Kelly Davis extended with us since the first meeting. She came here today, so she did not make it.
Okay.
I spell it in, Kelly did not continue.
Hi, Mr. Cameron, members of the commission, Mr. Pope. I am Darla Odom. I got married in September, so I'm in Odom now. I saw a fellow Odom up here. I am here, as Lynn said, in place for Kelly Davis. I am an executive manager with the Berkeley group and pleased to be here with you this evening. I actually was the planning director, of course, in Brunswick County. I don't know if any of you are aware of their county administrator now, Leslie Weddington. I actually hired Leslie as my assistant when I was in Brunswick County. So it's a pleasure to come down here to Greensville County. I've always been part of it from my time in Brunswick and appreciate
When were you in Brunswick?
I was the planning director in Brunswick and I was there from 96 to 2001. So tonight, we are going to talk about comprehensive plan update and have this public hearing tonight. We are, I'm going to give you a presentation, try to keep it brief, not go over everything that we talked about at the open house, but hit some of the highlights or open it up for public comment and certainly answer the questions you have with the anticipation that after public comment, you're going to make a recommendation on the plan tonight for, to the board of supervisors. So first of all, let's talk about what is the comprehensive plan. The comprehensive plan is a community's document. It's an official adopted public policy document that provides long range direction for things like land use, transportation, economic development. It should provide the framework that can be used to evaluate and direct community projects, investment and growth and development for the next 20 years. The comprehensive plan describes a future vision of the community and serves as a decision-making guide for zoning ordinance, but it should provide those regulatory tools and it should be support the county like the capital improvement. It's authority and responsibility to develop and update the comprehensive plan originates in state law. The code of Virginia mandates that what goes into the plan, much of it, it also mandates how the plan is adopted and when the plan must be reviewed and updated. This code of Virginia requires a locality to review their cop plan at least every five years, but the best practice really is to look at the plan every year to allow for any course action that you see. This is the project's vote as we, as we gone through this project with you all. You see that we reviewed your existing plans. There was a public workshop, there were interviews, a survey was taken. There was then the establishment of the vision and goals of the plan. The draft plan elements were developed as well as the maps. Then implementation strategies were developed for the plan. There was a public review and refinement period. And here we are tonight at the planning commission's public hearing. I would like to say that on behalf of the Berkeley group staff, we certainly appreciate your all involvement and participation in the planning process and especially a thanks to Lynn and Triva for their work with us as we've gone through this process, as well as citizens that have taken their time to read the plan, provide a feedback on that. During the community engagement process, we heard from citizens, and this is a slide provides you with an overview of the comments that we received. There were things mentioned such as the expand access to broadband, an interest in economic development and job growth, as well as access to increased recreational opportunities. And so there were some values that people presented. There was a value in rural character and open space. There was concerns about job opportunities. There would, a top priority was public schools. And also their question about where should growth be directed? And the response was around the city of Emporia. Since the public comment period in the open house that we had, I think that was in December, Lynn, we have made some edits to the plan. Most of the changes to the plan have been minor in most of the chapters. Those address things like Ms. Wiley threw it out relative to some data points that were missing, some name changes that we had found, and some editorial comments. So I'm not going to go through all of those with you, but I am going to give you some changes that were made to the land use plan, as well as some changes relative to transportation. Some of those comments based on what we received from VDOT, which VDOT reviews the locality's comprehensive plan and offers comments on it. So the plan has a vision statement. The community's vision for Greensville is that the county is a forward-thinking community with strong family values. Greensville County will support job creation, education, and high quality of life that strengthens our economy and encourages strategic growth while becoming a closer bound community sensitive to the needs of all of our citizens. And so that was something that we carried out throughout the plan as we talked about the various elements of the plan, strategies of the plan. They are all designed to meet that vision of the community. So one of the chapters of the plan is the natural environment chapter. And it was clear in getting the feedback from the community that the natural environment and rural character of the area were important to residents. Survey respondents listed rural character and open space, as well as the natural environment, as two of the qualities most valued in Greensville County. So there are strategies in the plan in addition to that goal to meet the goal of the comprehensive plan relative to the natural environment. And you'll see those key strategies here. That is relative to water resources and quality, recreational opportunities. The first set of strategies, as you see here, is related to protecting and promoting the county's water resources. Two major rivers, as well as large amounts of wetlands and floodplains, make this an important component of the local environment. This chapter promotes conservation of valued environmental lands. It discusses agroforestry districts, green infrastructure, and wildlife planning efforts. There are no changes to that chapter, except some minor editorial name changes. This chapter, your plan is on housing. This call for housing in the county encourages the rehabilitation of industrial development, housing types and density consistent with existing neighborhoods and to promote various types of quality new residential development that are available to all populations in the county. And for housing, the strategy stays the same. There were no changes to these. It talks about rehabilitation and maintenance and modernization of housing, affordability, home ownership, new construction, infrastructure such as sidewalks and lighting to support housing, regional partnerships, and its ordinance updates as it relates to potential accessory dwelling units and short-term rentals. And there was no changes to this section since the open house, we all presented the plan to you then. The next chapter is on quality of life. Quality of life chapter considers community assets private and private that contribute to the level of satisfaction
So maybe you don't have to get your slides. At the same place.
Excuse me, I am so
That's all right.
I'm spoiled and I'm used to having somebody do that for me, so y'all excuse me. I apologize. Y'all help me keep up. So this chapter deals with the assets of public and private that contribute to the level of satisfaction and happiness of citizens in the community. It discusses government and social services, education, recreation, health, safety, and public transportation, as well as cultural, social, and religious engagement and opportunities in the community. This chapter discusses the importance of these assets for a thriving community as it progresses. And strategies for this section are related to general government. The availability and accessibility of information was one area that was highlighted by the citizens during the workshop. They felt that that was important. And so there are strategies that deal with ensuring that that information is available. Some communities offer a monthly utility bill newsletter, email newsletters, or Facebook pages to help get information in bits and locations out to residents. But if you see these strategies, talk about government partnerships, reconcolidating elementary schools, talks about the high schools, a parks means assessment, development of new park amenities, public safety assessments, and public transportation service. Yes, sir.
I have a new idea on page 72, I need to make a correction. If you don't like the look at administration office, the office of management for the justice system, the local district, the district law, or municipal planning, it's built in 1929. That's a correction we need to make. Okay, 72?
Yes, I will make that note.
The, we've become training school was built in 1900. There was no school for blacks in Greenwood County, so if blacks got together in 1900 and built the training school. They finalized it up until 1929. In 1929, it became the public school and not a private school that were operated by blacks. So the correction should be, it's training school started in 1900.
Yes, I will make that note.
Page 72.
When you said that, there should be 1900.
It should be in 1929.
Yes, sir.
Actually, it was J.H. Walter and Georgie Kelly and Joyce Williams, the new public for first to transport. We had no school for blacks in Greenwood County. And the public, they didn't, they didn't come, the public school was in 1929.
It became a public school in 1929.
That's, that's made to those. I think that we did get information, but it was when it became a public school, not when it actually got stopped.
Yes, sir. And we will double check that, I appreciate that.
I got it right here.
Yes, sir. Let's see, so so the next chapter of the plan is relative to infrastructure. Greensville County made infrastructure a priority in the previous comprehensive plan and is now experiencing infrastructure developments that are introducing new economic possibilities in the area. This chapter outlines the past and ongoing accomplishments of the county as related to infrastructure and public services and the opportunities it has created for the community. The strategies relative to infrastructure talk about public water and sewer expansions, supporting the capital improvements plan, reliable, effective, affordable access, supporting telecom structures, exploring the natural gas feasibility, implementing landfill study recommendations, expanding cycling where feasible, and relative to solar agreements to potentially expand green infrastructure relative to that. It's because of Greensville County's success with efficient development of essential public services that the community can now move to the next phase of progress, focusing on the non-essential elements of quality of life for citizens while developing a diverse economy. This chapter examines a recurring theme heard during discussions with the public, the board, and the planning commission, and with staff, the community's desire to limit growth to the areas serviced by public services. The chapter outlines the urban service boundaries and rural service boundaries and the development of plans that were previously designated as focused areas for infrastructure investment and discusses the importance of continuing to coordinate infrastructure development with land use plan.
So the skippers, we need to move it slightly to reflect the M1 zone area skippers. It's just a little bit out of place on the map, so I'll be with you. I'll draw that up and do that shift.
I'll make a note.
Well, you know, this is where I wanted to get some detail, because when we look at the map and we have this urban service boundary, I'm not sure. I believe that this has gotten extended on this iteration of it. And so, you know, I think that we would all benefit from, again, some sort of landmark on north, south, east, and west, how far this is going. I just don't know where tonight, we're, we're going to talk about that, because I know the public needs to talk. I got a ton of questions, so just tell me when you want me to start. Or you want me to do it now as we go through each chapter? And everybody else can chime in if they've got a question? Because I think from like here forward is where it kind of, there's change, there's
Each chapter, yes. And we can go through it now, you know, this is looking 20 years into the future where we expect
Right.
You know, to
And we just never got into, you know, the last time that we talked about this was sometime last year, probably last summer, if I, if I remember correctly. And so we didn't have everything compiled. And so we don't, like, you can look out here in 58, and our urban service area is extended down 58. And I'm just looking at this little eight and a half by 11 map with no, with no road names on it. So I have no, no idea how far it has extended out. So I was hoping that Lynn could explain to everybody kind of a general area of where it is.
And we printed a few bigger maps, but our big cloud, we're going to get to print a man of one here today, so I will have two foot maps. But yeah, we can start and kind of go around the old urban service area. If you want to, and I can do landmarks and roads to the next extent.
I, I would like that, because I don't know
So if you look, if you look on 50, can y'all hear me?
I actually have a, I was, part of my presentation, and I'm glad to skip over part of these chapters. You know, the economy chapter is the same, there were no changes to the economy chapter. So we can skip over that unless you want a highlight, that will be the same highlight that you got before at the open house. So I can skip over the economy. And then also, transportation is where there were some changes.
Yeah.
Because of state law requiring the urban service
The urban development area, which is completely brand new to us.
Well, and so the, I tell you what, if you let me do this, because we'll, I'll talk about a couple of changes that we received from comments from VDOT relative to transportation and mobility. Then we'll move on to land use. And land use is the chapter that talks about
In detail, right?
In detail, the development of the urban
Service area and development area.
Yes, and I have a little bit of, you know, information that comes from the state code relative to that. If you think that will help as far as the discussion, okay? So relative, this is a chapter, transportation mobility. You know, the county is looking to fully utilize and maintain the current road and rail networks while expanding public transportation opportunities and upgrading pedestrian infrastructure to ensure safe and efficient movement of goods, services, and citizens throughout Greensville County in the long. These are the strategies for the transportation and mobility section. And you'll see part of that is, you know, VDOT coordination, urban development area designation, land use, signage, airport maintenance, and aviation business expansion. Talks about pedestrian and bicycle infrastructure, as well as transportation alternatives. So for this chapter, this is chapter eight, the changes, and this was a result of the public review from the Virginia Department of Transportation. There is a, VDOT offered to us that there's a six-year improvement project that VDOT wanted to have included in here because, and that is in table 8.5, Moore's Ferry Road Bridge over I-95 deck replacement. That was part of the six-year plan, which we did not include it in the original draft, and they pointed that out. It updated routes of the Greensville-Emporia transit system, and that map is shown as map 8.4. And also, the change was that a midterm priority transportation project was added to table 8.6. And this was the reconstruction of Route 639, Rockford Road, from Route 301, Skipper's Road, to Route 650, Collins Road, to address geometric efficiencies. And so these were the three changes that were made to the transportation chapter. And if you look at those, the short-term projects include intersection and safety improvements, pavement markers, and warning signs. The midterm improvements we talked about, they include sidewalk and safety improvements on a number of roads throughout the county. And the change that we referenced relative to the midterm priority is actually number five now on this chart. And this is the map updated number five. And I believe it's in this area right here, in my little the, about the correct area for the project that we talked about, number five, which was
Moore's Ferry.
Just down here.
It's a long bit longer.
A little bit further, right down here in this area. A little bit lower.
Yeah, a little bit more.
So it's 639 Rockford Road with 301 and Collins Road? That's what you're saying number five is?
Yes, from Route 301, Skipper's Road, to Route 650. And that was hand, choose a chart.
Okay.
So that's all I have on transportation. We can move on into land use, which will get us to talking about this.
Yeah, well, it's a, it's a correction there on page 128, under the Vtrans 245 section. It says an urban development area has not been identified. And apparently, again, since this last iteration, one has been identified. I'm not really sure if I do, but one has been identified, because it showed up in this packet we got last week.
You said that is on page?
128.
128.
It's the very first one in the highlighted section. It says, this county and VDOT have not identified any urban development areas. Well, that was the case in January, but somehow from January now, apparently one has been. And that's what's in chapter nine, is there's some detail saying this would have to be
There was no UDA in the previous top plan, because it wasn't required then.
Right, it wasn't required.
You usually take all existing urban service area map, and then it was submitted for VDOT for their climate review. And the purpose, just to clarify to everybody, if you have an approved VDOT urban development area, it opens the door for more VDOT funds, plus when we apply for projects, we get higher scores if it's in one of those defined areas, but then the UDA. So it's pretty much similar to the urban service area that's shown in the land use section. It's also pulled out the UDA for VDOT and transportation.
Right, I mean, the, the UDA zone is not as big as the urban
It is big, it centers around the corridors of state lands, which we, two of those corridors in Greensville County. And remember, that was shown on our land use plan, it's looking 20 years into the future, 58. It's typically along those corridors, 58, 301, and 95.
All right, well, I mean, we just need to correct that one in this chapter, that was the only thing.
In the transportation, but then, yes, may I bring that note? So now, I'm swapping out
I take that back, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, that's all right. Sorry.
Oh, no, you're So chapter nine is the land use chapter of the plan. The goal of the land use section of this plan is to concentrate new business and residential development in and around urban centers and make the transportation intersections, while allowing rural areas that promote the expansion of agricultural economy to maintain and maintain the rural character of the space of Greensville County. There are some strategies for reaching this goal. Some zoning ordinance updates are recommended. There's some general development principles that are incurred and included as strategies in the plan, urging landfill development, discouraging detrimental development, creating connected neighborhoods. There's some implementation strategies and some strategies relative to community character and maintaining community. So the changes to this chapter as a result of the public review and requirements was there were changes to the future land use map, which is map 9.1, in the plan. There were some various changes to that, and they included things like adding an additional commercial area was designated. There was addition of text to discuss TDAs, as well as a new map on 9.5 that shows urban development areas on it. And this is the future land use map. They are looking at, in preparing this map, looked at the existing land uses, access, resource protection area, where primary uses in some of these land use areas such as agricultural, residential, commercial, industrial, et cetera. Also looking at designing principles like site design, parking, assist management, landscaping, buffers and screening. Also looking at designing principles like site design, parking, assist management, landscaping, buffers and screening, open space, and amenities. The future land use map for this plan is broken down into land use categories. There are categories for rural areas that you see here, categories for residential areas, categories for active development areas, and public use areas. And I will list all of them for you that they go up here. One of the things that we took into account in looking at this is the density that would be suggested as appropriate within these various land use categories. And they're listed for you here, but the densities are correctly in the, um, wrong. The densities in this plan are, were created in a way to mirror the existing densities that were allowed and put in these areas. So the, the plan doesn't come forward with you today recommending increased densities in a lot of areas. The densities that you already had in your plan fell under the guidelines that the state looks for if they're going to say, here's an area that's appropriate.
Right.
As an urban development area. So while these areas are being established, really the main reason for that establishment is that it opens the door for state funding. Where without that area designated, then you're not eligible or eligible to apply for those types of funding. We'll talk about that a little bit. But I didn't want you to think that these urban development areas automatically need higher densities than what you already see.
Well, I think as, you know, population-wise, the cleaners out is set to remain scattered.
Right, right. And a lot of those densities are going to be driven by public infrastructure.
Right. I mean, I understand it's like, you know, at what point are you going to identify it? And if you don't identify it, you may be losing out. It's not prob, my problem isn't identifying, it's just trying to see it because we had talked about it. And I would, and I want to know specifically where it comes up.
Yes. And, um, so I guess part of the discussion is why doesn't they provide for urban development areas? Really, the why is that it promotes transportation-efficient land use and land use development patterns to help reduce the impact of the road on state's transportation. That's why I think that's why. Um, encourages traditional neighborhood development as a means to attract development and spur local economic growth. Meaning that you, you want development as your plan, and as we heard from the community, you want that development in the urban areas.
Right.
And so it encourages that traditional neighborhood, more urban-type design that you already have in the areas of the county closer into the border.
Am I correct in saying that if it's in an urban development area, this is, these are, uh, areas are going to be zoned residential? These are going to be areas that are zoned business, but they would not be areas that would be zoned manufacturing?
I don't believe that's true. I think that we would have some.
Well, it's, it's, it's broken down, uh, on the map into residency, residential, medium-density, parks, recreation, public, semi-public, commercial, industrial, uh, rural hubs, uh, flood, hazard overlays, and industrial areas.
Well, I mean, so I, I think that's why, why I'm confused, because, you know, if you read anything about urban development areas, you know, again, they're, you usually see them in bigger cities, but these are areas that are, you know, it's got, it's apartment complexes. It's, it services that, you know, it, 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 it's businesses that service the people in the area. It's not manufacturing areas, it's not industrial, it's places where there is transportation and people can walk to apartment complexes, they're very much a city landscape. So again, a no, a concern of this is, I know this is where we're going into the future, but we're, we're zoned, oh, we're, we're zoned A one. If you look into a future land use map and it says, you know, well, this is not going to now be rule A one because this is going to be designated as an, as an urban development area. I just don't want these things to become bullet points to hinder somebody that has land in this area from doing something with it of an agricultural purpose. Uh, because now we, we've upped the classification on this. Now this has become, um, you know, commercial, or this has become industrial, and it's a bean field. And it might be a bean field for the next twenty years. Uh, so I, he, I'm hoping that the urban development area does not in any way hinder us of vision, like an urban service area does. You know, an urban service area, if you're looking at future land use, you're going to say, hey, future land use says you're in urban service area, water and source on the cusp. We're not going to, we don't want to put anything there that isn't consistent with that. Um, and so, you know, adding this other layer, again, another thing that, that we're looking at. And I understand that we got to get there, and we got a plan appropriately, because one day, we're sitting here, but somebody's going to be sitting here, and they're going to go, well, why? Because these crazy people, you know, foresee that, uh, that of course we want to expand what's going on ninety-five and three oh one and fifty-eight, and as long as we're doing it on those corridors, great. But if it's going down into, you know, some of the roads that are right around here, then that may make a difference to a citizen who might not understand what you just said.
Yes, sir. I will say to you this, I, in, in response to, you know, the comprehensive plan is a set of policy documents. Um, and it is, it puts together in a document, a comprehensive look at your existing conditions and where you may want to go in the future. It does not change the zoning of the property.
Right.
So the, the person with the agricultural property that has the bean field now has the bean.
Yeah, I understand that.
Opportunities through designating these boundaries for funding from the state. Those types of funding include the Office of Urban Planning and Investment, OIPI, growth accessibility program. That's for technical assistance that provides support to look at studies of areas and how, as things begin to change, or if, in certain areas, they won't change.
Right.
You know, you, but in other parts of those areas may begin to start changing. And so this allows you some state funding assistance through grants to study that. See, you know, is, is now that time, um, versus some other time in the future. I will say to you that I did, you know, as far as, the UDA's used to be mandated for high-growth areas. And then there was a change in state law, and I think it was two thousand nine, we'll put you on that. But there was a change sometime around that time that began to open it up slowly to, and that might, actually, two thousand nine, I think was when it was mandated for high-growth areas. And then since that time, I think it was maybe like two thousand and fifteen, that they began to open that up for opportunities. And there are a number of localities that have been looking at this because of funding. So, um, and that doesn't mean that you certainly don't, I just want to make sure you understand that not to say that those boundaries are certainly pre-ultimatum, or what those boundaries.
At hip, at hip's level, I have to feel for rural counties, assuming various grants.
Right.
You know, when I'm the NP, you know, and, and.
I can't hear you at the podium working, I can't hear.
I don't have a microphone.
I know, I can hear you because I can see you, but.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry that they didn't give me one. I don't know why that is.
I just couldn't see you.
I'm sorry. Were you talking about the relative to, the localities and when the state began to? It used to be a mandated only for high-growth localities. And since that time, the state code has been changed to say other localities may take advantage of designating these urban development areas. And as Lynn was saying, that helps open up funding where otherwise more rural localities were not eligible for that because they didn't meet certain criteria that they had in the state code at the time.
All right, so tell us where, uh, where the boundary is, kind of specifically, get, give us some landmarks. You've got it going out, um, down through the line, just kind of hit some, hit the circle. You pretty much, I think it's circled, uh, in four, but I can't really tell at all if it's not on the eastern side or not.
I don't know if this helps at all, but this is the one behind here, the, uh, this side on the, my right. Is the purple line represents the boundary. And again, just to remind you all that the plan does not, this area, Lynn, correct me again, but one of the reasons why this area was chosen is because densities within this area are already compatible with the densities that the state looks for for in urban.
Right, they would be along these.
We just throw the UDA back over to the urban service area map in the land use chapter.
Uh, well, I wanted to bet, but I mean, we're right here on the urban development area, so.
Lynn, does the, uh, urban service area map on page fifteen?
Just, I got it, I got it.
And you, and they don't, they don't overlay. I mean, that was the other thing, right? That I was like, you know, so.
So. Do you want me to take that back to twenty fourteen?
Let's start with fifty, as well, that, that's the larger area. Yeah, well, if we're the public, right there.
Here we go.
So let's start, uh, going up the fifty-eight west corridor. Uh, when you go up fifty-eight, uh, it goes to, uh, right near Wood Hall or on Grassy Pond Road. And then it just goes down Grassy Pond and stops before you get to the trial, the old Grassy Pond intersection. It takes in a part of Chapman's Forward Road, uh, which is, is before you get to, uh, Grassy Pond Road. Uh, coming back, uh, towards town, I don't know if I need to do a glasses, a lot of, I'll excuse me. It takes in the areas that just go off of the old Scottsdale, over Home Park. Uh, kind of follows the city around, and then it goes up to Slango's Lake and Water Wheel. Uh, it goes approximately to, uh, I'd say where David Conwell lives on this map. And what, what I want to do, let me help you stop this, what I want to do to you is, I want us to get a GIS layout of a property line so a resident can say, hey, that's my piece of.
Well, yeah, that's what.
Yeah, and then lightly overlay these different areas so you can actually see specific.
Right, so that's, that was the detail I wanted, so, so say anything from, from around Donald's House. Towards, uh, town is, is urban service area.
That can usually be done with, with, uh, the different layers, I don't know the GIS terminology, but we can do the base layout of all the property lines, every parcel in the county, then overlay these urban areas with kind of transparent colors, so you can see individual property lines on it.
Exactly. All right, so that's the kind, so that's kind of where it is on, on this area, which again is consistent. But again, it goes, it goes, you know, a little bit further, um, north than what I necessarily thought. I thought that it might just be contained at this exit, but it goes north.
It's thirteen, that's it, it's off, uh, it follows the ninety-five corridor off to Jarrett. And when you look at this map, it goes back to, uh, on six oh eight, Horsehead is.
So it goes, it, I, obviously it's going up, if I have it scoring up three oh one, then it's headed west, and it's going, uh, of course, it'll be all the challenge here, and then it would stop at, it will go to Horsehead, is it going to Derek Allen Road?
It part of the South Allen, it follows Allen Road up to, uh, six oh nine, uh, White's Hill Road. And so approximately, I'd say close to the pipeline of Horsehead, where it's depicted on this map.
It would stop there.
And that takes in the, uh, Mayback industrial site. Uh, then it, it follows the South Tannell Line, basically, that, three oh one, back to the city. And then it ties in, over here's got Sunnyside, Fruit Yard, and the airport area, April fifty-eight, I can't find it in that area.
So it's all the way to the pipeline on fifty-eight.
And then when you come down to the south of town, fifty-eight, which is by the, it's enough. Uh, it's down the Low Ground Road, a little bit further than what we have Public Utilities, which will be past Chambers Road. Uh, it's a part of the Little Low Ground Road in it, and it cuts over to, uh, three oh one just south of. And back up, it takes in a part of, let's see, the Brink Road, almost the Collins Road. And then it takes in six eleven, all the way past Camp, Camp Brown Road, uh, probably to, right before you get to, uh, Clay's and South, it stops at those curves, those S curves on the track.
It stops at, is Camp Brown, um, uh, west of, uh, Allentown?
Camp Brown right before you get to Allentown, that's where, uh, Oakain's List right in the corner. That's Camp Brown Road, you go a little bit further up to Allentown. It goes just, goes beyond that, uh, before you get to, uh, the S curves and south.
You mean, where the solar project is? Where, where the solar project?
Yeah, solar project, yes.
So that's not a legal.
The solar project, so.
That's across from Blending Way.
Or, uh, the solar project would be in this part with.
So it's that far down the range, but water sewer does not go down that far.
Yeah, what?
Water sewer does not go down that far.
No, water sewer touches to the front precinct, right there, that area on Drive, right, right, just past Washington Farm. It's in the house.
Is that, are we clear on that?
Well, yeah, that gives me a better idea.
Okay, I didn't, I didn't know, I don't want to get bogged down here.
I mean, I know, and that was what I was saying, I, I mean, I hate that we have all this to do tonight.
Right.
I don't know, we got a solar project, and I know this is various details stuff, but in, in my opinion, it's, you know, it's important that we're voting on it, and I need to know where I'm voting on.
Well.
And, um, you know, and I didn't know.
If there's just any questions about it, maybe our best procedure tonight is to table this and move on.
I, I, I agree. I agree, I didn't, I hate that we have both, you know, both things.
Well, I mean, I don't think this is going to change, it just says twenty forty, I would be with a mugger.
It's not, it's not, but I mean, you know, we, we should have done this in the.
I think, I think at this point, because there's a lot of questions, and I think you had a question earlier, I'm not sure we ever got it all.
Let's finish with the presentation out there.
That's good, yeah.
And our map showing the exact property size and where it is openly known.
I mean, because I, I feel like a lot of people who didn't, um, you know, it, it's nice to know that if your property is in an urban service area or not, or it's in an urban development area.
I agree, but I don't, I don't think many people here tonight are talking about it.
I agree, they're not. They're not.
I think we need to clear this up and move on. Okay, let's, let's finish the presentation.
Yes, and any more questions, please go through, so, address them before we come back.
Any more presentation you got?
Yeah, yes, sir, um, uh, and, and again, if we can get questions, that will certainly. Yeah, yes, sir, um, uh, and, and again, if we can get questions, that will certainly help.
I mean, I'd be happy to talk to you, you know, later afterwards, tomorrow, whenever.
That's fine.
All right, so let's see, we're going to go back to, um.
I think we've all located next.
We were almost at the very end. We were talking about the urban, uh, development area, the, the EDAs and the one that's outlined in purple here, um. By naming this area as an EDA, it allows for the addition of funding opportunities. So that's really the main goal, not to change course because the densities are recommended to change.
Exactly.
So to have that agenda. So we talked about that and any questions about that, we can, um.
Just in your opinion, with this map, there's.
Yes, having the, um, parcel layer.
Okay.
On, um, in a doc, a planning document like this, we really can be put parcel lines.
I know.
In a map like that, so we need to have something that's larger. There's something that certainly could be available in the planning office for those that have questions once this gets adopted on where those standards are.
We'll land up with a, a GIS site too, so it's available to the public as a layer on the GIS operating system.
Yes, that would be accessible. So the next part of the plan is implementation, uh, section of the plan. Um, and this is something that, you know, the working group has designed and they've designed the plans. Strategies for obtaining the goals within the plan. And then these implementation strategies are, it's neat, those as well. And you will see they're broken down by implementation type, what they deal with in the plan, who is responsible for that implementation strategy. And then a timeframe as far as a priority. So that helps you as you move forward and you're making decisions on who should be involved in that decision-making process, when should you start thinking about it? And moving forward about that. So the next step, again, we're having the Planning Commission public hearing tonight, having some discussion, um, you know, at the close of the public hearing tonight, the Planning Commission can make a recommendation to approve and recommend the plan to the board of supervisors. You could amend and recommend the plan to the board of supervisors, you could disapprove it. Or as we had discussions already, you could have a public hearing, close the public hearing, and then have discussions at your next meeting or at another scheduled meeting to take action. And then once you've made a recommendation, then the board of supervisors will also have a public hearing on the conference. Thank you so much for your time and thank you very much for Miss Kelly Davis this evening. And I'll be glad to answer any questions, the other questions, and I know we're going to go through some of the subtle steps.
Any questions? A planning question from his own. Okay, thank you for the presentation.
Yes, sir, thank you very much.
How do we want to handle this, when you have this public hearing? I don't want to curtail that, but we announced it all soon, we are ready.
You still need to, you need a public comment period, if anybody wants to get out and speak. Uh, or against or for what I'll come and say, hey.
And when we have it again, we have to do the same thing.
Yes.
This is the public here.
Okay, okay.
And I pardon me for interrupting Mr. Chairman, but if I might ask that once you have the public comment, certainly we're going to keep notes of, of the public comments, but if we could set a timeframe so that, you know, say within the next week or week to, I know you guys need to see the map relative to the parcels. But if we could then make some reasonable time to get your comments back, so we'll have time to respond to those, to be prepared for your next meeting. If we can do that and make those changes. Thank you all so much.
Thanks, okay. All right, since this was scheduled as a public hearing then for the comprehensive plan, is anyone here that has a burning desire to talk about the comprehensive plan?
I do.
Yes, come on up, this is comprehensive plan.
Right, absolutely. No doubt about it, no doubt about it.
Just state your name, please, sir.
To go hand, um, Chris Thompson, fifty four thirty, Party Road. Um, I would like to say, I kind of agree with, uh, Ms. Wally over here about being convoluted tonight. I would like to have another public comment period. I am, I read the entire program, it's a hundred and fifty some, sixty pages, and now I am super confused. I don't see how you can vote on it, uh, without having another public hearing after you all have ironed these things out and then come back to us. Don't, so I'll keep, I have some comments I wanted to say that were a little lengthy, but I'll keep it short. One thing that I want to focus on, Ms. Belinda H. Drop in the meeting, um, the board of supervisors meeting said last night that is supposedly a guiding principle in the plan. And it was reported to be the most important thing to the citizens. And it was, uh, we get on the right page. Um, she noted in the comprehensive plan that citizen's view, rural character, and open space, sense of community, natural environment is the most important things to the citizens here. I ask that you all as members of the planning mission, when you look at any project, whether it be what's going on tonight, I promise I wouldn't say that word here in this meeting, but whether it's that to take that to heart, because that is where we live. It's Greensville County agricultural rural area. And it is apparent to the citizens from the citizen comments we got, that that's important to the citizens. So that should guide the planning commission. The only other thing I would ask is the, for clarification, the comprehensive plan that is on the website that says draft, is that currently, uh, is that currently accurate at this point?
No.
It's still draft.
But I mean, is, are there any changes that are, that are on that, that draft that are not on the website?
Just what we discussed about it.
Just what you discussed about it.
So I, I can't swear that the urban development area is, is on the, um, the website. I don't know, because I got a hard copy of this, I didn't check it.
Okay. I, I, I'll say this, the way the comprehensive plan is written, I think it's, um, it's the way the draft is, as long as there's not changes that happen and then the public doesn't know about it, seems like to me that it really talks about protecting the rural character of Greensville County, which is utmost important. And I would ask if that draft on that website changes that it is updated and before there's a vote by the planning commission, that is updated so the citizens can take a look at it and see if we have any comment after it is supposedly all said and done and you all are ready to vote. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I'd like to speak.
All right. Just state your name, Mr. Slate.
Clint Slate, one of the three mixture lane, best disposable question than a, uh, a statement. I sit on the planning commission in the board and they were discussing comprehensive plan. And I'm just always curious to know that you all sit up here as a board and a, a commission, just like we said as a commission in the board. How really, how much input have you asked for, like a, a comment section, a sit-down section, session with someone to stakeout? Have you added that? Is in the county, we had that. Not, not, not just public, I'm talking about, I don't know stakeholders, and I'll say this, and this is the same, hey, I can't say it. I have a lot of stakeholders. Don't think I'm any entitled to anything anymore than anybody else, but I would assume for some of the building and development that I have done in the county and I own a fair amount of property in the county. I would think that it would be eight blocks, like take the laboring section, the drab area section, go through and notify, we've notified the animals about everything else. Is there a chance of sitting there in one-on-one? Because a lot of clarification questions you've got there, um, like what it's going to be? I would kind of, before you plan, what I will do with my property? I'd like to have a little feeding, I'd like to have a little, a little saying that, I don't need anybody planning for me. I've said, I've been saying it before, kind of where I break the board of supervisors, agreeing with any planning, anything for me, matter of fact, makes people understand what I got in the county. But I'm just, I'm just curious, I hate to see y'all tonight, you said it best, we're talking about twenty forty, you know? We've waited this long, I've listened to it through all these other meetings, I would rather see y'all take a little pause, get clarification, because I'm a real, I sit back here, y'all reading their papers, I'm reading your facial expressions. That's what I do. I don't see a lot of confidence, and I'm not confident that everybody sitting up here behind this slab of wood understands what's being presented. And I would hope that before we rush up, and we're talking about in twenty forty, that we would come back one more time because I also, if I go back to comprehensive plan, I listened, I believe it was you, Mr. Kane, speak on it before, about changes and things that need to come in and some changes went through and all of a sudden, it's gospel, we tried and ruined it right there, and people at the time that day, because you're very good at going through and answering the questions, but you're worrying these folks down out here. And half of them might leave, but Clint Slate didn't leave. I'll cut the lights off when, when you leave tonight, I won't hear it. So I think we need to come back and not rush this, and I would hope that we could do that.
Thank you, Mr. Slate, I was trying to look here as to, it was on the website, it, it, it had a comment. And it told me here, how many people responded, I was looking for.
It's telling a hundred people, I think a hundred twenty-five.
It wasn't a big number of people.
A round of applause.
But it told me that it wasn't a large number of people. Anyhow, thank you for your comment. Uh, I, I think the consensus is, uh, get here, yeah, that, that we probably need to table this tonight. I would entertain a motion that we tabled this for another meeting, if you're there. I have a motion to table it, I have a second. Any discussion on that? All in favor of tabled this comprehensive plan vote tonight, say aye. If I'd vote, we tabled, thank you. Okay, uh, the next thing up is going to be the, uh, twenty-two thirty-two dash one dash twenty twenty-two Monoc's, Monoc's solar on the applicant, please.
Okay, Monoc's solar is applied, uh, for twenty-two thirty-two determination to determine if the proposed utility scale solar project is in performance with the comprehensive plan. So to start off, uh, Mr. Brooks, uh, again, give a presentation, uh, of your proposed development. And then we'll move it to the staff report, uh, down by the bar.
Thank you. Good evening, Chair Rob Robinson, members of the planning commission and planning staff. My name is Rob Brooks, I'm a solar development manager at Urban Grid, the applicant for Monarch Solar. Uh, the project that is before you, for your recommendation on substantial performance was the kind of comprehensive, the kind of comprehensive plan. Before I, I go into a few of my comments, I just want to, uh, let folks here know that came to the meeting, um, we did hold and have a community meeting last week, um, that was advertised in favor, we sent letters to all the adjacent landowners. Um, we had one person come, uh, we, we had a good meeting despite the, the low attendance, but I just wanted to offer up that, uh, if there's folks here tonight that maybe couldn't make that meeting, it was inconvenient for them, uh, to please reach out to me, I'd be more than happy to set up another opportunity to, to walk through the project, uh, with them and, and address any other questions. Um, I briefly want to summarize our, our work with the planning staff since twenty twenty, uh, share some corrections of fact in the third-party report that was authored by the Berkeley Group, and highlight the existing vegetative buffer areas that surround the project site, which is the document that I handed out to. I'll, I'll address that for the end of my comments. Uh, Urban Grid has been pursuing of this project for a few years. I first met with the county in twenty twenty, when we formally presented a project that was far larger in scale. In response to the feedback that we received from county officials, we scaled the project back and combined it to an area north of Smokey Ordinary Road. Urban Grid submitted this special use permit application in the spring of twenty twenty-one. But before our application could be processed, the board of supervisors revised the solar ordinance. These changes included limiting the size of the solar facility to a thousand acres, including a maximum coverage ratio of seventy-five percent, and locating projects five miles or more from existing or previously approved solar facilities. Uh, these changes required us to redesign and resubmit our special use permit application, which is reflected in the application that you have before you tonight. I think we went out that the third-party report does contain figures of that on the geography of the project and its proximity to sensitive areas. Specifically, the project does not border and is not close to the Nottaway River or the Otterdam Swamp. Um, and I also did provide this information here recently to, uh, Mr. Pope. Um, the Monarch Solar Project is located in one of the most remote areas of the county. As you can see on that first page of that handout, it sits up in the northwest corner of the county. Uh, it's away from neighborhoods and targeted growth areas. In addition, the project does not use any farmland. The only criticism made by the Berkeley Group in their twenty twenty thirty-two review was the project might increase the concentration of utility-scale solar facilities in the region, potentially impacting the rural character of that area. Urban Grid respectfully disagrees with this assertion for the following reasons. If the project is approved, it would be the only solar project in the region. And as required by the solar ordinance, the project would be located more than five miles from the nearest approved solar facility. In addition, the location of the project on managed timberland will allow the project to be surrounded by a mature vegetative buffer that will screen the project from adjacent properties and people traveling along Dudlam Road and Smokey Ordinary Road. Uh, we've also included a significant wildlife corridors, uh, and areas that will not be timbered that will serve as habitat and undisturbed areas for wildlife. To illustrate how well hidden the solar project will be from Smokey Ordinary Road, I provided you with that handout that shows a zoomed-in view of the conceptual plan along Smokey Ordinary Road, which shows the existing vegetation that's highlighted in green, and the area where we will plant some additional vegetation, which is highlighted in yellow. I've also included photos taken from Smokey Ordinary Road to give you a sense of the dense vegetation and the embankments that exist along the road. And I'll, I'll just note that those pictures were taken in the winter time. Uh, so, you know, no leaves on the trees at that point in time. So through a combination of a hundred and fifty-foot setbacks and a hundred-foot wide vegetative buffers, the project will be difficult, if not possible, to see while driving along Smokey Ordinary Road, as I think you would test to when seeing those images. Uh, as you can see, the Monarch Solar Project has been carefully sited and will be well shielded, so it does preserve the rural character of the area. So comments I have, I thank you so much for your time.
I just meant, any questions from the national? Uh, Rob, yeah?
Yeah, well, did, uh, through this map that y'all gave us originally.
Yes.
One of the things that I had a question on is, if you could explain the, uh, the easement period that's south of Smokey Ordinary Road.
Yes, um, so that is, uh, it's just a easement, probably somewhere between, uh, seventy-five to a hundred feet in width. And it would come from the Brunswick, Greensville County line, uh, go across, uh, a single parcel, um, on the north end to south of Smokey Ordinary Road, and then turn north crossing over, uh, Smokey, Smokey Ordinary Road. And, and that's what that is, is that's, uh, electrical lines that will, uh, carry electricity from the Brunswick side portion of the project and then connect it into the core, uh, of the solar area. So there are no solar panels, uh, proposed and to be located south of Smokey Ordinary Road. Everything is north of Smokey Ordinary Road.
And are these transmission lines above or on the ground?
Uh, I don't think we've, uh, figured that, that much yet, that quite yet, um, it, it could be their one. I would say that, um, it's probably more likely that they would be. I would say that it's probably more likely that they would be above ground.
Well, what, I guess what I was trying to understand is the, the project boundary. And so, I was surprised that all this, I wish you had a
A large screen.
I was just surprised that all this area is dashed with the same project boundary, why, why has that shown project boundary?
Well, we, we have to show it that way, because when you show a parcel that's utilized, you have to show the outside boundary of that parcel. That happens to be one of the largest parcels in our project area, and it has a strange shape to it as well. But any, any parcel that we touch, even if, if it was just, again, this easement path that would be, you know, seventy-five to a hundred feet wide, we have to show the entire parcel, ju- just so the, the, the planning folks can understand what parcels are implied.
If you look in the bottom right corner of that map, there's a breakdown of all the improvements for the entire project. The different acreages.
It's a bit further in.
Yes. The white box in the bottom right corner. They might have, they might have an option on a piece of land that's, that's five hundred acres and I want to use six acres or something. Absolutely. So they're showing all the parcels that they have options on. And then that box and all the parts and site plan that's showing actually what they use it in the acreage.
So that's seven forty-nine point five.
Seven fifty, yes.
Is the size of the territory to the ground.
Correct. It's really, it's truly the area that's utilized to serve, it's what's, the panels, it's the easement area, it's the substation, it's the fence, it's the internal roads.
Oh, a whole.
It's solar management facilities, everything is encapsulated into, or included in that seven hundred forty-nine point five of some hundred acres.
Sub, sorry, substation is also.
Yes.
Yes. So the overall boundary is considered a volume. The property outline.
The property outline is, but just to be clear, there's not a fence around all the acres that you see outlined. In fact, the fence actually only goes around kind of the pods of panels, and that's to kind of allow wildlife to continue to utilize that area.
When I got this, hey, it, it was all pretty concentrated up here, but then I see this, but in lack of a better term, kind of the tail of the dog down here at this end, with, with these panels down here. Just curious, I'm not into design. I guess the reason there is, is because of getting closer to the transmission.
The reason that it looks strange like that is, one, it's, it's the parcels that we have under option. We don't have those parcels kind of flanking, flanking that area under option. And so it's, it's just kind of what we have available to us. And then, the, the, where it leads to, which I think is orange rectangle, I believe on your map, there may be a blue one, that's the switching station and where we connect into the existing overhead transmission line, main transmission line.
Any more questions, if we? Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you.
Do you have?
No, I think that you may be.
Yeah, I think there's somebody here from the Berkeley Group first. Thank you, sir.
Lindsay, the Berkeley Group will present the staff report that they developed for this application.
May I put your name? The, Joe, okay. Good evening, I'm Lindsay, I work with the Berkeley Group, I'm a senior manager specialist and environmental planner. The applicant has requested that the planning commission reviews the proposed solar facility as a public facility in the Virginia Code section fifteen point three dash twenty-three two. The issue presented to the planning commission is whether the general or approximate location and character per extent of the proposed solar facility is substantially important to the county's comprehensive plan or parts thereof. Subject of the planning commission is going to vary to decision that the planning commission will separately review and consider the merits of any associated S U P application. The application, the applicant proposes to construct a hundred and twenty-three megawatt facility on approximately thousand acres, where I discussed the seven hundred fifty acreage, acreage to what that entails. The project is part of a larger five hundred megawatt proposed solar facility that will include adjacent land under control by the applicant in northeast corner of Brunswick County. The application property consists of a mixture of crop and timberland with land to store for use for agriculture and forestry purposes. Additionally, the applicant conducted a base one a cultural resources survey and identified six verified archaeological sites that lie within one mile of the project boundary. With respect to wetlands, the applicant conducted a desktop, a desktop study and identified wetlands potentially impacted by the development. Staff has analyzed the proposed project in light of the changing nature of the county's landscape and with previous approvals for other photovoltaic solar energy facilities. Analysis considerations include in total, six sites would cover over five thousand acres of the county. The proposed project would be second largest in the county to date, and the buffer to propose subject with a hundred fifty buffer along the project boundary. Staff has also analyzed the comprehensive plan elements, and the proposed project appears to meet some, but not all of the comprehensive plans, land use, and renewable energy goals, objectives, and strategies. First, the proposed location appears to be partially in accordance with some of the land use goals and objectives set forth in the comprehensive plan. It is located in agricultural, agricultural zone district. The character and extent of the proposed utility scale solar project does not appear to be in accordance with the comprehensive plan. The project would increase the concentration of utility scale solar facilities in the region impacting the rural and character of the county. Understood, and the solar facility should, as set forth by the comprehensive plan, include preservation to the rural character of the county by directing control and growth in designated areas and preventing the improvement of conflicting land uses. There is concern to maintain agricultural characteristics, characteristics of the county not included in the urban services district. This proposed solar facility is second largest presented to the county today and would increase the solar project coverage of five thousand acres in the county, which may significantly impact the rural character. Whether the general location or approximate location, characteristics or characteristics and extent of the proposed solar facility are substantially important to the comprehensive plan. The planning commission has three options. Approve the application with written consent for the decision, deny the application with written consent. For the applicant, thank you.
Any questions? From the Berkeley Group, the committee.
I didn't understand the recommendation of the Berkeley Group. I couldn't hear it quite enough.
Yeah, I think what you probably didn't hear was, was saying that the planning commission has three options.
I heard that part.
You did?
It was the recommendation. Does the Berkeley Group have a recommendation, I guess?
The Berkeley Group's opinion is that the application is not substantially in accordance with the comprehensive plan, they would agree with a non of the application.
Well, that's new news, because that's not stated in here.
Okay, okay. The word "not" was what I missed, I think.
Judge, and the
It does say that there, you take that.
She gives us, they give us two, they give us, they say, opinion, I know, option one is you can approve it, and here's some bullet points for reasons that you can approve it, and then here's option two, you cannot approve it, and here's a couple of reasons why you cannot approve it, but they typically do not take a stand and, and give us their opinion. At least, that's not what was stated in our, in our agenda packet, they typically don't.
All right, in addition, are there any questions from the planning commission of this?
I would say to you this is, is the Berkeley Group here in the table.
Our opinion is that the application is not substantially in accordance with the comprehensive plan.
That, that's, that's what I heard.
Yes.
Okay.
Well, how?
It's stated in the text.
You're right, yeah, but is she, is maybe for the night, is it arguing, is it with you?
It's not stated in he, I mean, I, I looked for your opinion, and it's not in here. You said there's, there are some areas that, that say that it's substantially important, and there's some areas where it's not, and you don't ever really give your, your underlying opinion, because first of all, I have you say that it's one thousand four hundred ninety-one acres. That's not correct. It says the proposed solar energy facility will occupy one thousand four hundred ninety-one acres. That is incorrect. That's only page six.
Fourteen ninety-one is the total parcel acreage.
Yeah, that's not the total parcel.
I would hear that at seven hundred and forty-nine point five acres.
Seven hundred forty-nine acres is under panel.
That's what you're talking about. Panel, substation, roads.
And everything, so where does, where does one thousand four hundred and ninety-one, because if that were true, you would have denied.
I'm reading the rule of thumb.
Exactly.
I suspect that's the overall panel.
That's the overall, all, all, all.
It's not the overall area, it's that's three thousand acres.
It's the overall, well, when you throw this, the easement parcel in there, that's over thousand some acres, just that one parcel.
No, it's eight hundred acres, parcel eight ten is where the easement is going. That particular parcel that's, I mean, by Dominion Woodlands, is around eight hundred acres. If you add up all the parcels that Dominion owns, it's around three thousand plus acres of land that Dominion Woodland owns. But they have identified sixteen parcels that they want to put solar on. And of those sixteen parcels, they're only going to be putting panels on a portion of those, eighty percent of those parcels are going to remain as is. There's only going to be solar panels on about twenty percent of it, it's going to be basically right in the middle. Because you're not going to see it from somewhere near your road, it's not going to be on the Nottaway, it's going to be in the middle, and it's not going to go south of Smokey Ordinary. So it was Berkeley Group very confusing when you read this opinion, and I feel really sorry for our two new members, because when they read this, um, it really didn't make a lot of sense, I mean, I'm just going to be honest, that was my opinion, it, it didn't make any sense, and, and not
It's not the thing I could call a third condition.
Well, yeah, number three, why did you put one thousand four hundred ninety-one acres, and where did you get that from? And are, are we missing something, because you are the consultants here, and we pay you for your knowledge, and I have racked my brain trying to figure out where that number came from.
But the project is seven hundred forty-nine point five.
Under panel.
Conforms to
Yes.
what we have set forth in the zoning ordinance.
Exactly.
That's why I asked for the breakdown of the acres, because if you remember other projects again, and in the future, there was, what constitutes the project, that constitutes acres that are used, even though they have an optional, that project.
And, and my next, sorry, my next question to you is, and you mentioned total acreage of, of all solar that has been cited in Greensville as being five thousand.
That's over one.
As being over five thousand, I do not have a clear, um, well, let me back up. Board of Supervisors decided, I believe in March, that they were going to limit solar, they were going to cap solar at seven thousand six hundred acres. So therefore, once we hit seven thousand six hundred acres, there will be no more solar in Creedsville, that is our current ordinance, okay? So it's not really a valid argument that says that this is going to take up five thousand acres, because we're stopping at seven thousand six hundred. There will be, you know, maybe a couple more projects, but that's it. So I really don't think that five thousand, that's a valid argument, but even that number, I don't think is correct. The board supervisors, when they capped it at seven six, at seven thousand six hundred, they, they did not indicate in the ordinance if that included the entire project, if that included under panel, if it was within fence, if it included substation or not, so there is tons of arguments being made about how do you arrive at five thousand? And again, that goes back to the comp plan, which we never, you know, got to tonight, because that, that same language is in there, which is incorrect, or, and, and we need to clarify it, so, you know, it was riddled with, with problems, and it, it's confusing, so, you know, I just, I, I want to hear what, what our fellow citizens out here have to say, as to what they think, because we can't really gather much.
Let me say one thing, didn't we define project size in the new ordinance?
We did for the thousand acres, but, but I would assume, and I have assumed this, that since we defined the thousand acres as within the fence, that total solar acreage of seventy-six hundred will be defined within the fence. So if that is the case, there is no way that five thousand is correct.
We're at four thousand, I'll quote the exact.
We're not at four thousand seven hundred and sixty either.
Twenty-one, and that, two of the projects didn't quite deal with many acres as it says, that number will probably come back in a moment, but I will they finished those two projects, because they hadn't finished yet.
But I would think that seventy-six hundred would be set by, whatever the definition is.
It's like I said, ninety-five of this, you know, it's, it's not the total parcel acreage, it would have been way over that, because we're in projects, it will be the disturbed acres, just like it's broken down in that chart, they broke it down just like we asked for, so they determine the actual acres that are part of the project. Disturbed, which includes like the copper pads, the panels, the roads, interconnection lines, stormwater features, all that's been improved, been improved, so correct.
What you hear, if I had found it, was, if you look at it, project, if we say, if this project became a part of, you know, we have, it would put it over if I had nothing.
Correct.
If, if this amen, it took that, I'm just saying right here, that this one project would be by common, if the project became a part of, we got to prove, so it would put it over the facts of our.
You, you're correct, but in our comp plan, which we never got to, which I just pointed out, that it actually incorrectly says that, but that was my point, that my clarification is, is when you look at all these numbers, and we have to be very careful, and again, back in the comp plan, I do not think that we can even state how many acres that we have developed so far, nor can we use that as an argument to deny it, because we are only allowing seven thousand six hundred acres, this falls within that total acreage, so I'm not really sure why that is an argument to, to not approve it.
It's incorrect, it's to, space, to pay special attention to location and extent of the project, because we have set such a strict limit, you want to make sure that
Thank you. Okay. To the public, oh, as you can see, we've had plenty of discussion among ourselves. The only thing I would ask is, I've got a list of matters, and I'm, and you, if you guys have been to the before, we're we will try to limit, whether you're for it or against it, for three minutes. We will tell you, when two minutes will be left, speakers should address the planning commission, not anybody else. Speakers should face the planning commission and not the rest of the audience. Planning commission are conducting this public comment session to see comments from each party, so the planning commission will not respond to questions during the public session, and the planning commission will not engage in a dialogue with speakers. Planning commission decision is based on land use principles, so the speakers will encourage comments relevant to land use issues. Comments concerning the principles governing the commission's decisions will be provided. Planning commission has to able to be respectful of others who are here, and the kind of planning commission will have the right to ask questions of the applicant. The planning commission have the right to ask questions of the applicant during the planning commission deliberation. Okay, anybody, we can, I can take them either for or against, it makes no difference, just come up, tell us what your thoughts are and your statement, and we're going, you can bring that.
Good evening, my name is Fred Maldonado, I live at ten oh six Doodlem Road, and I'm here because I got a letter from Lynn telling me that this proposed project is going to be adjacent to my existing property. When I get to that point, I would like to ask if it's possible to know how much the county paid for this sound system, which doesn't work. I mean, that's disgusting, we're sitting back there with our ears covered, we can't hear anything anybody's saying, especially if you got a mask on. Why even say anything if you're not going to speak to the audience out there? Why even say anything if you're not gonna speak to the audience out there? It was, it was just, it's aggravating. Not, they, I mean, can, do I have to speak this stuff? Is it even on? It isn't even on.
This one's on.
Well, this one apparently is not on. You know, come on, that's not right. That's just not right at all.
I'm not into technology or stances.
Well, I'm just into trying to listen to what y'all are saying.
I saw you, I saw you.
And that, that's all I'm trying to, you know. So I'm very new to this whole idea of commenting on what activities you're gonna take place on adjacent property line. I don't know you got it. I mean, mic's on now.
Mic's on now.
Oh, my goodness, thank you. Very good. Sorry to have to raise a ruckus about that. Um, so as it says now, I really don't have much of a label to stand on regarding the, 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 um, the project. It's, it's adjacent to mine. I have been to the meeting the other day. And I understand that there's going to be a good buffer between my existing property and where the project is gonna be. So it isn't on my property. It's not a, you know, not my backyard type of thing. It just is not on my property. Um, so I'm, I'm, I'm concerned about the question that came up. I wrote it down long before it even came up. And the question was, how far along are we on the four percent of the county property that's gonna be allowed to go solar? Well, I listened to this conversation y'all were having, and you all don't seem to know really what constitutes the project. You know, there's a, you know, there's stations, there's roads, there's a buffer. Um, if, if, if the, um, if the solar, um, project goes on to a portion of a property and, you know, ten percent, and ninety percent of that parcel that was involved in the, in, in, in the project, only ten percent is being used, is that other ninety percent gonna be subject to expansion? Um, it just, it just seems like that would be, you know, to the project.
Yeah.
No, okay.
What, uh, when they submit their application, they say how many megawatts it is going to be, and it must remain at that megawatts. If they want to add to the project, we have to come back and do the entire process again.
Very good.
I think Lee has a number. Do you have any?
Four thousand six hundred twenty one is where we act against this project. What is it, Lynn? Four thousand six hundred twenty one.
Of the seven thousand six hundred.
Yeah.
With this project.
Something.
You got a better.
All right, well, that, that, that's good. Um, so anyway, I'm not opposed to the project. I am concerned that a lot of, um, control be put on it so that it doesn't get out of hand. I know that Greensville County is not an affluent county. It's got prisons, it's got landfills. Now it's going with solar. It seems to be that, um, communities like ours seem to be, um, they're, they're easy pickings for this kind of expansion. More affluent counties are not gonna let this stuff get in there. Just like they don't wanna landfill, they don't love, they don't want that. Anyway, that's my comment.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else?
See if my knees will let me get there.
You're giving it time.
You've been sitting awhile. They kinda lock up.
I'm Robert O'Hara. I own a two hundred acre parcel of, uh, farm and woodland that joins, uh, this, I'll call it the project. There'll be fifty to a hundred acres under panel that it joins my property, less the buffers. I was gonna chat briefly about the whole concept of energy and how we, citizens in a free society, get to make up our minds for ourselves, but that's kinda philosophical. But, uh, I do appreciate the opportunity to come speak. I wanna thank the commission for allowing us to do that. I think it's part of our democratic process that is at its foundation. We apparently had a study done, and I think that's a wise approach to have them do some work for you, and hopefully they will guide you. I couldn't help but notice that their focus was on the rural nature of Greensville County. And I guess topical beliefs about energy in general. Whether we're right, wise to go down one path or another at this point, I'll speak just to the land use. I think for generations, this county has been blessed with a true nature and that the principal economic driving forces have been agriculture and forest products. And they are also two of the top three or four leading inden- economic indicators in this Commonwealth. This is a Commonwealth built on agriculture, forest products, and its true nature. The cities have, of course, uh, populated the Commonwealth to a credit degree in other areas, but not here. And for generations, again, wood, wood products, forest products, and agriculture have been the mover. And I believe they have provided for generations of citizens of this county. And I don't know that I see changing courses in midstream is a good approach. I think that, um, will be well served to preserve the nature, as I believe the foundation of your county comprehensive plan suggests. I think so. I'm generally opposed.
Okay. I'll be back. Come on up.
How y'all doing? Me and my brothers own a hundred and fifty four acres this thing's gonna join to. And we farm ninety percent of the land up there. They gonna do away with a thousand more acres. The deer is gonna be eating our crop slam up. It's mostly woods back the other way. So you know they gonna come to our fields. And I'm not too crazy about solar panels. I had some on my dog. They weren't much to it. And Dominion bought property from us through the road in up here. The head man come over, sold the panels, won't wear the dirt they were putting up over there. So I don't, if they gonna do good, I'm not totally against them. This is a spot where they no houses enough.
It is.
I'm still scared.
All right, so you basically, are you opposed or what?
Yes.
I'm trying to keep it. Okay. I'm sorry.
Sir.
Fine. I've, I've, I'm sorry. Yeah, turn it to final.
Four weeks. Four weeks.
Okay.
Forty eight fifty five Wyssfield Road, Derek County. Um, three hundred and thirty acres that'll join this project. And I don't oppose it. I don't oppose any project that any landowner wants to do in this county because it's their land, and they oughta be able to do what they gonna do with it.
Okay. Anybody else?
My name is Howard Aitken. I'm at thirty eight ninety Slankis Lake Bridge. And I only have one acre.
Yeah.
Um, now I had more acreage, but in the spirit of taking care of family, I gave fifty one acres to my nieces. Let them do something while they're here. But what I wanted to say is, so in addition to that, solar energy is one of the least efficient ways of generating electricity. How do I know that? Back in nineteen seventy six, nineteen seventy four, I worked at the GE Aerospace Center in King of Prussia, Pennsylvania, developing solar energy, developing solar panels for the space station, developing solar panels to put on the rooftop of your homes. Now, this project does not affect where I live, but the Purdy project wraps around my one acre. Now, when that Purdy project comes in, I'm looking out my back window now, out the kitchen window, and there, it's a deer playground. And that project comes in, it changes. Now, there are things about solar energy and it makes it. Solar does not generate income except for the people who are selling us electricity. Does not make jobs except doing the installation. When that's done, and typically, that's twelve months. When it's done, it's done. The jobs are gone. Now, where do we get more jobs from? If we bring more solar into Greensville County, which we don't want. So it's just a, a cycle that keeps going, and eventually, unless we stop them, Greensville County will change.
Thank you, Mr. David.
Flint Slate, one eighty three Bixtry Lane. I'm speaking this time on behalf of, uh, Faye Annie as her registered, appointed land manager of her properties. She also received a letter as an adjacent landowner, and she was unable to be here tonight and ask for the term of speaker on her behalf as a land manager and to express to this board this permission that she is in favor of the project in question.
Fine, okay. Okay. Where do I leave it? Come on up.
Chris Thompson, fifty four thirty party room. I would like to just reiterate what, uh, Judge O'Hara said. And that we asked, with the comprehensive plan, that we not turn Greensville County into an industrial parking lot with solar panels everywhere, and that we preserve the rich nature and the beauty of Greensville County and not turn it into a parking lot. The other thing that I say, if I look at the various projects, to me, this one not being all around the whole neighborhood, um, is better, but I don't still don't want it. But it's better than sticking someone between Slankos Lake, Meadowbank, um, and the Purdy Road, okay? Where his houses everywhere. But I've got, if, if planning commission's open to it, I've got a binder of stuff with problems about these things. The panels do break, storms do break them. They can damage your water system, our drinking water. It's, it's not made up. It's truth, okay? Dominion will tell you it's not. Um, and stormwater issues, the stormwater runoff is destroying farmland. They're destroying other neighbors' lands. It's proved all over the Commonwealth of Virginia. And landowners to a degree, yeah, have a right to do what they want to with their land, but not to destroy their neighbor's property. And the other side of that is, if, if landowners can do whatever they want with their property, then I can go to Tallulah's and I can put up a brothel, and it'll be just fine. Okay, so if we go to landowners can do whatever they want, that's why we have an entire commission and a planning commission to, uh, determine land uses in certain areas. Uh, also, just so you know, I read an article that said Virginia Power is gonna propose to increase our rates by twenty percent because we, we sold, we have sold off, uh, natural gas to West Virginia, to other places. And in Michigan, folks, they have rolling blackouts because the solar technology's not there yet. But I'm reading Walmart and some other places are being smart because they're gonna put parking lot, solar panels on top of car rentals and not destroy trees in the name of green energy. And that's my burden. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. David. Okay.
Hey, good evening. My name is, um, Mike Gray, five eighty three Scotland Drive. And I've been to several of these meetings over solar, early on, later on, and a whole lot of things I just wanna say. Change is inevitable in this county, you know, so someone who's arguing no change, that's unrealistic. As far as bringing jobs to the county, you know, yes, it's probably true that jobs will only come at a construction period those times. But I will promise you, and please tell me differently, there is nothing else knocking down the door to coming to Greensville County to bring revenue to the county, to bring revenue to landowners who have done nothing but paid taxes for two hundred plus years in this county, and they have an opportunity now to make some real income. Solar's been accepted, you know, I'm not gonna tell you twenty years down the road that we don't find something harmful in it. But we're hearing every day of horrible things. We're finding out about Roundup, which I'm sure everyone here has sprayed it in their yard. You know, I don't know anyone who died from Roundup. I hate that it happened. But I probably spray some Roundup this week sometime. You know, it's inevitable. Things are gonna happen. Things are gonna come at. But things are advancing. And as far as other people saying we can do what we want to do on our land, the example of a brothel in Tallulah's, well, brothels are illegal. Brothels are noisy. They bother the neighbor. And I don't think every one of them's gonna be properly in Tallulah's. That's a poor example. If I don't wanna beach a property, short of disturbing my neighbor or hurting my neighbor or doing anything damn undesirable, I should be able to do what I wanna do on my property if it's not breaking the law, it doesn't smell like a hog form, it's not a landfill. I'm for landowner rights, and I think we need to move forward with the solar. I also think it's a shame that Monarch has to cut their project back to meet the thousand acres. I think Greensville County should open it back up to exceed a thousand. I think they need to open it up to receive those projects for less than five megawatts so someone who owned only ten acres could benefit from their ten acres. Um, there's a lot of dispute. Now, I'm certainly in favor of this project than most all the others.
Thank you.
My name's Charles Lynch. I live in Doodlem, thirteen fourteen Doodlem Road. I grew up there. I'm sixty six years old. All these woods we're talking about, I've grown them all my life. I've hunted, enjoyed them, raised my kids on them. I'm not opposed to the project, but I would expect it to be monitored and built as it should be. Oh, we mentioned the Nottaway Road, we mentioned three great, more swamp, join this project. That dumps right into the Nottaway Road. So, that's what my concern is, environmental concern. It does not join me, but I've been a hundred and fifty yards of it. They decide I, I do, I will, I prove, I'm a part of this project. Thank you.
My name is Lucy at one thirteen Ashford Court in Hundred Rapids, North Carolina. And I wouldn't really think of speaking tonight, so I usually have the day ahead, but I didn't this time. But I do support this project. If it's a good project, and I think this is a good project, and I support solar. Um, I think everybody's just kinda afraid of solar, and from listening to people, they sound like they think ninety, ninety five percent of the county's gonna be in the solar panel. It's not gonna be that way. But I do support this project. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Barbara Ray, own land at five eighty three Scotland Drive, at three seventeen Scotland Drive, Derek. So I'm a registered nurse in this community. I've worked in our schools. I've worked twenty years ago in our hospital, working currently work in our hospitals. I also work for the federal government with National Guard. My job there is educational health and safety and environmental health. We have solar panels at Fort Pickett. Been there for a decade. Never had a problem. I'm responsible if there's problems. Solar brings in clean energy and also brings our community money. As a nurse in this community, our children, we need a lot. Our education needs a lot. Our families need a lot of economics support. And the government giving it to them isn't fixing it. So we need to improve our schools, and we need revenue badly. As a landowner, I have a problem with someone telling me what I can and cannot do with my land as long as it's environmentally safe, monitored, and not a nuisance to someone else. You know, I go to work or I go to town every day, and I ride, have to go right past, um, the middle school. There's a house there that's a big nuisance in it. When I ride past it, I mean, it's an asshole. Someone needs to help that home. But no one says anything about that. So I live in the country, and if I chose to do a project, I could do a project, nobody would ever see a panel from the ground. If I chose to. My point being is, I would, I would like this board or this commission to do their job and do it well. My point being is, I would, I would like this board or this commission to do their job and do it well and help monitor these projects so that everyone can win. Far as the hunting goes, far as the farming goes, I lease my land right now for it. I hunt myself personally. I don't wanna lose those, you know, things that I enjoy, but it's my land, and I can't tell someone if I lease their land what to do with their land. If I want them to control what they do, I don't need to buy their land. That's all I can say. I'm for it.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? Okay. Commissar, do you have any more questions? I just turned to you personally to ask if she was having fun yet. Okay, um, you guys wanna have a discussion about it, or will y'all?
We need to go out and protest.
I guess. We're not, um, we never, you never, we really never went in regular session. All right, we can now have a motion to go back into regular session if you'd like.
Yeah.
Motion to go into regular session. Any discussion on it? All opposed, all approved going to regular session, say aye. Five votes. Motion carried. Okay, go ahead.
Just one general question. So we're at forty-six twenty-one right now. So, and, so we've got a cap of seventy-six hundred.
Correct.
What percent of the average in the county
All percent.
is seventy-six hundred?
All percent.
That's where we got the seventy-six hundred. I think that's kind of important to realize.
That if there's a discussion on this one, that if this one shouldn't be approved, it's gonna add seven hundred and probably ninety. Is that right?
Twenty-six twenty-one.
Not, not the six hundred. We are using the number at the bottom, which includes the but that's not on the test. It appears, just, that's, that's
It brings up approximately fifty-three hundred seventy-one acres, up to seventy-six hundred, up to ten-six hundred.
Adjusting my own information, are we gonna count it six hundred and ninety-nine point two in pounds, or are we gonna count the rest of this one?
You can grass out, it makes up for seven hundred and forty-nine, plus extra property.
Because by definition, this is the area for a priority.
Although it may not be that.
Correct.
Okay.
It runs outside the fence, you might have stormwater features outside the fence. That's disturbed acres.
Disturbed.
Approved. Approved.
Okay. All right, if you got a question?
Of course, I want to make a statement. I've heard this over and over again, that we should do what you want to do. I moved to Greensville County in nineteen ninety-four, and I discovered when I came back, you can't do what you want. Because it's long ago, it started in nineteen eighty-two. So I would like to think that though, I, though you want to do young men, I discovered that that is not true. You cannot do it. We have a situation where if a person wanted to build like a little, like a little storehouse in front of their house, in Greensville County, you cannot do that. If you wanna put up a fence in Greensville County ten feet high, in Greensville County, you cannot do that. I made that discovery in nineteen ninety-four. So if I was to study that, if you think people would do that, it's not true. Even had this discussion with the NAMM energy. Solar, and I think someone said earlier, I think the young man said earlier, you have wind and thermal. And I asked the young man from the NAMM energy, if solar is so good, he would not answer my question. There's all sorts of energy out there. Okay, so, if, 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 when we're looking at this, when we're looking at our comprehensive plans, I think we should use that when we're talking about authority and advocacy. And number one thing, I, I, I think I've been in the comprehensive plan since I've been on the board almost four years, and I'm standing right here, and I'm standing behind our statement, I'm standing behind what the city of Greensville County want. We do not want to upset our advocacy and our vote.
All right, any other comments?
Why don't look at me?
I'm sorry, what?
So why was everybody looking at me?
Well, I was looking at anyone, really.
I was taking a break for a second. Um, I, I mean, I, I want to explain, we have, we have two new members, um, tonight, and, and, and some of the people that are attending tonight, I know have not attended some of the solar, um, public hearings and packs, because now it's gotten south of the river. But what we're here tonight to do is to say, is this substantially in accord with the comprehensive plan? That's what we're charged with tonight. It's not to approve it. It's, it's all, all we would be doing if we voted yes to move forward. We are giving Monarch Solar the ability to come back on another night and, and, and apply for a special use permit. And then we get into all the details of where's Fred's land, where's the buffer gonna be in relationship to Clark's land, and we talk about all this details, and we go through the plan, and we ask specific questions. And then, if we can approve, we can approve or deny, it really doesn't matter because whatever happens can then be appealed to the board supervisors, and they make the final decision. So I want everybody to be clear on that tonight. It is really, it's supposed to be kind of a peremptory, um, meeting. It isn't in accord with the comprehensive plan, this twenty-two thirty-two, and whatever is decided, uh, again, is still not the end of it because it can be appealed with the board supervisors. So, you know, I just thought that was important, that that gets cleared. That's the reason that we haven't gone into any great detail, because we're not at that point yet. Monarch is not required to give us detailed site plans or anything. They've been not given up detail, uh, they're not required to at this point.
And the twenty-two thirty-two process is just the planning commission?
Correct.
It is, the planning commission has given their, uh, recommendation right to the board supervisors.
Right.
And the board can overturn the planning commission's decision.
Over the twenty-two thirty-two?
Yes, yep. Yeah, for everybody else, just so you know, this twenty-two thirty-two is not just limited to solar, any public facility, a new school, sewer plant, the revenue system, etc., demonstration, etc., but that's solar, what we're here tonight to solve.
No more discussion? Well, we have three options. We need to do something.
Well, again, I think that, you know, we, this is the, also, the very first plan that we have heard since the board of supervisors changed these, our solar requirements. So now, all projects have to be under a thousand acres. They have to be within a mile, um, and a half of another project. They have to be within a mile of the transmission line. It's a lot of deliverables, a lot of things that they have to track. This project has met this. The project did start out several years ago being bigger, but then, once the law got changed, it now has met all of the current requirements. So, you know, with that said, they have done everything that they were supposed to do as far as meeting those requirements. They have checked that box. Um, I do not see any reason why we should deny it going forward to the, to the special use permit process. I have seen, this will be my fourth project that I, uh, personally have looked at being on the planning commission, and this is by far the most, um, remote, uh, project. It does not affect any roads. Uh, it, it does not, it's not near the nonway, it's not near a road. You will drive down a smoky ordinary road, and you will not see this project. I think I counted eleven wildlife corridors, is that, Jeff, did you count the wildlife corridors? Because it appears to me to be well planned out and well thought, um, out, and, um, I see a reason, uh, not to let it move forward to the S U P process.
Is that a motion? More discussion?
I, I, I would say that I'm gonna stick with this one. Of all what is done with comprehensive plan, and all that's been said and done, I don't see why I can sit here and go against the people of the county of Greensville. I think the Corstil and the egg is what I major concern, I'm not gonna sit here and do anything to change that on what we've done with all of these lives of people.
Where in folks at? Somebody asked a hundred people. Where are those folks at? Why aren't they? Okay, let's, let's, hold that down. Anything else going on?
I have to make the comprehensive plan.
Thank you.
I'm in Green Room Service. I believe that the last time we met, there was a climate that, um, still in progress, that developed, um, fully. So, with that in mind, I think that we need to take more time before we go forward.
Okay, any other comments? I think Ms. Wiley was in the, in the process of making a motion.
I was gonna make the, the notion to, um, to say that the applicant is in substantial accord with the comprehensive plan. Um, and I move to approve that.
And that's, and that's really all that we're acting on tonight. The captain's gonna have to come back and do a detailed plan. If y'all decide we're gonna slow things down, I think that would be the appropriate timing for it, so I agree. Second that.
You're second that. We have a motion at a second. Any further discussion amongst the planning commission on this project? I mean, Ms. Wiley's motion is to approve, is that right?
Yes.
All right. Here, no more discussion. I assume you're ready to, but all in favor of the motion to approve this project, that it be known by, I guess, a raised hand, best way.
I've heard a lot tonight, and a little kid on the block, and I do have a lot of respect for my peers and, and I'm learning classes. At this time, the way I feel about what I've heard, I can't say no, and I can't say yes. And, uh, I've been in Green County fifteen years, got very moved here. I love Green County. The solar thing is new. I hear a lot of yeses and no's. But, um, I respect Ms. Wiley, respect, respect Mr. Pope. The kid on the block, I'm sure they're gonna teach me a lot. But, um, at this point, I would say no.
All right.
I'm sorry, did you say yes or no? Yes.
Sheriff Robinson?
Yes.
Yes. Officer Robinson?
Yes.
Doctor Chapman?
No.
Diane Rose Barnes?
Yes.
Miss Odom?
No.
Miss Anne Torres?
No.
This way?
Yes.
Five yes and four no. So the motion would carry.
Okay, now, this will be recommended to the board supervisors.
At the Drew Livee.
At the Drew Livee. Anybody that has a strong feeling about it, we need to go to the supervisor meeting. All right? Any other matters? I, I'll see you on our agenda some other matters. I think it's all over on there.
All right. For our new members, there are training classes available, so if you're active, I think you go to that. Everybody got them? I think training classes available, every page for, it's like I'm also studying for several people who've been a bit of a I don't have a much time, I'll, I'll go live and get the existing members. Uh, Paul Charman was a working guy, we'll give him a first pass, give us, uh, treatment, we'll see. I'll, I'll give. I'll check.
Any other? Is that a motion, adjourned? Some more? All the papers there.